Good evening, everyone. I'll call our meeting to order here in council chambers at 6:00 P. M. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy, Macias, Razak, Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
All right, we have no remote electronic attendance. Is there a public comment tonight, Chief?
Oh, Your Honor.
Uh, okay. Board appointments, for your information, Mayor's appointment of Brittany Thorington to the Plan Commission to fill the unexpired term of Bill Allison, who expired June 30th, 2027. Excited to continue to diversify that commission, and they are a urban conservationist. So adding another perspective to that commission. Any questions? Hearing none. We have a presentation, our 2025 Keep Moline Beautiful Commission City of Moline Superhero Awards. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Keep Moline Beautiful Superhero Awards. We do this annually. We recognize businesses and individuals who go above and beyond to beautify the city. So the commission itself was started in 2008 with our mission to create a healthy, sustainable community by working with volunteers for beautification, litter control, and recycling. I would like to recognize some of the commission members who are present today and not present. Other person Debbie Murphy is a member, Kristin Bergren is a member, Mary Lynn, Laura Chumley, and also Jennifer Smith. Jennifer Smith is the newest member. She's part of Moline Center Program Manager. So this year, the commission wanted to acknowledge some endeavors that paralleled other opportunities we've had in the city for Bee City USA. Part of Bee City USA strives to increase pollinators such as bees and butterflies within the city by increasing habitats for them. So luckily for us, we have a couple of projects in the downtown area that we would like to recognize tonight. These have been maintained this year. It's not easy to do. You have to have a lot of knowledge and care to do so for these pollinator gardens. So we're looking to recognize and award a business and three individuals as well. So for the business, I think the first award will go to Atlas Collective for their pollinator garden, which is right outside of their business. And Kara, the business owner, is here to accept the award.
Thank you. If you want to.
Okay.
Take the mic.
I'm floored. We have like the tiniest square on earth in the quarter there, and I worked with Don Temple and Kelly Natche and just kind of squeezed their knowledge out of them. And we had volunteers in the community kind of help and plant, and my husband Jordan and I just kind of were winging it. It turned out beautiful. We're really lucky. And I hope to do like four times that next year, but I only have that one square. So I'm gonna have to build something. But I'm honored. So thank you for having me tonight. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. So for the individual award, we actually decided to go with three individuals. These individuals are with Augustana College. They have partnered with Renew Moline to do a pollinator garden right outside of Old National Bank. So I would like to recognize those individuals, Dr. Chris Strunk, Olivia Bezub, and Hamdia Hamidu.
Did you want to say anything?
I'm a little bit out of place here. I guess I just want to say thank you. This really wasn't expected at all. Me and Hamdia just are interested in landscape architecture, and Dr. Strunk presented us with this project, and here we are.
Well, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to questions on the agenda. I do not have any updates there. So we move to our committee of the whole agenda items. 8.1, a resolution approving change order number one and final with Miller Trucking and Excavating for project number 1462, 2025 culvert replacement project for the amount of $32,305.61. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, Council, we are looking for approval of the change order number one and final for Miller Trucking and Company for the culvert replacement project, which took place just to the south of Prospect Park. The original contract was $195,515.10, and this change order would bring the total project cost to 2270, 2071. And there are sufficient funds within the water and the storm sewer to fund this project. So we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. 8.2, a resolution setting the annual meeting schedule for 2026 and authorizing city staff to do all things necessary to notify the media of the 2026 annual meeting schedule. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, as you know, annually, we set our calendar for the city council meetings, both Cal Council meetings as well as our work workshops or roundtables every year in November for the subsequent fiscal year. So for 2026, we're recommending the calendar that was presented. I believe there were questions that Alderperson Schmidt brought up, which I believe were addressed by the clerk, hopefully to your satisfaction. If not, please speak your piece. But, you know, we have a number of things we're trying to always adapt to. We're trying to adapt to the school district schedule when they have holiday time and they're out of school. We're adjusting to the federal holiday schedule that we follow as well. And as well, there is a general election that's coming up. So we had to make adjustments for that as well. So with that, we're recommending approval of next year's schedule, which of course, the council can always amend at a later date should there be a reason.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion.
Your Honor, I make a motion to remove the meeting on February 17th and replace it with a meeting on February 24th.
Second. All right, motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
First, I would say my questions were certainly answered to my satisfaction, though I am going to suggest changes.
Could be well expected.
The, yeah, so this is just one where we see the holiday is there on the 16th, and I just am concerned if we or any members of the public have questions or things running up to that. I would like staff to not be out of the office around a holiday because we can move it, because there's a time to do it. It doesn't put us in any sort of weird gaps. So that's kind of why proposing that one change there.
Anything further? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That amendment passes. Back to the main motion as amended.
Your Honor, I make a motion to remove the meeting date on November 24th and add a meeting date on November 17th.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I just, this is to move it out of the Thanksgiving week when school is out and lots of people can be traveling, can be gone. It does mean we're having kind of those two meetings in a row without space because we can't move the other one because of the general election. But I think we're still better off just having that two in a row and keep our schedule that way.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Point one.
Yes.
Just one comment, and I would add then, for your knowledge, that November 17th will be targeted as the budget adoption date for the 27, 2027 budget.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing further, all in favor of this amendment? Aye. Any opposed? That amendment passes. So we are back to the main motion as amended with new dates. Mr. Timian.
Your Honor, I have a question. If we are trying to avoid holidays, was there any consideration for May 25th, which is Memorial Day, right before a meeting? I'm not trying to muddy the waters here. I'm just trying to stay consistent, which is a flaw of mine.
Is it right after?
It would be right after the holiday.
I just missed that one completely. That's all. That was just me missing it.
So we could move it to May 19th, and it's a back-to-back month, just like November would be. We would need a motion for that.
Your Honor, I make a motion to remove the meeting on May 26th and add a meeting on May 19th.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. That amendment passes. All right, so we are to the motion as amended three times. Which is fine. We're getting it, right? Any further conversation? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes as amended. Thank you. So we move to 8.3, an ordinance amending chapter 22, offenses miscellaneous of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section 22-1105, tobacco products, tobacco accessories, smoking herbs, and alternative nicotine products by increasing the number of Class B incidental tobacco dealers licenses in the city of Moline at the request of Ammon Food and Gas Incorporated, DBA Ammon Food and Gas. Mr. Atkins.
With regards to this particular request, these individuals had a tobacco license last year. They did not unfortunately timely move to renew that license. Had they done so, they would have been able to get that without going through this process. Because of the fact that they missed the renewal, they have to ask for essentially a new license to be created because you have a floating number of licenses. And so by them lapsing, there has to be authorization for there to be a license in addition to them asking for a license. So this is actually the gas station right by the central store, and they, it's my understanding, are aware that they will not be able, because of the restrictions on liquor licenses and the distance that they have to have between them, they're aware that they will not be eligible for a liquor license. But apparently, they are still going to try to reopen that location.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt.
I think this is one, like I said, with them currently being closed, looking to reopen, could they have applied? Could they have not? That's all fine. But to me, this is be just like when we're continuing existing. It's the same kind of principle of trying to make sure we can do it while still maintaining that control to make sure we're not some good over proliferation.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, so that's one, two, three, four, four ayes and one nay. That motion passes. 8.4, an ordinance establishing a river edge redevelopment zone in the city of Moline and establishing certain boundaries. Hello, Mr. Mathiase.
Hello. Excited to be up here. We've, the RE RC application is ready to go, ready to send off to the state DCO office. We're asking for your blessing on that, of course, but I did want to give you a little reminder of what it is. So obviously, it's a state program. The zone would be the 4,500 feet from the, would basically be 4,500 feet from the river. So the most northern part of our city, that's where there's a lot of historic buildings or older buildings. And there's many incentives that come with this program that can help rehab those buildings. So the main and best incentive is going to be the access to historic tax credits. But we've been, as staff, working with the other taxing bodies to try and offer a one-of-a-kind property tax incentive with our zone. So as you look around the state, most cities are either not offering a property tax rebate, or if they are, it's kind of just the city's portion of the tax bill. We've gone off and talked to the other taxing bodies. We think we'll be able to offer close to like a 90% tax rebate with this zone because all the taxing bodies will participate. So we'll get this application sent off to the state and then be working on an IGA with the other taxing bodies to lock that in. So we're asking for your approval of this, and we think it's going to be a great way to incentivize development in the older parts of the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Mr. Timian.
So to understand this correctly, we're kind of creating project-specific TIFs with the, all the other taxing bod, I mean, that's kind of functionally?
Yeah. The reason I don't like saying TIF, and I presented this to the school board last week and have no questions, I think we have overwhelming support there too. But I wanted to explain to them that I don't feel this is the same as a TIF because this entire zone is gonna, the property taxes are gonna keep going up in this zone, just like they do now. So this, the values are, right? Whatever's gonna happen, the values is gonna continue to happen until there's a project. At that point, we'll have this 10-year kind of freeze. So everything stays the same unless we have a project. And that's why, and it's not 23 years, you know, that's the other thing. So.
Yeah, 10 years is less than the typical TIF time.
And I didn't say this in my presentation, but just keep in mind too, they can't use both. So they can't utilize TIF and this.
Okay.
Or, you know, they have to pick between the enterprise zone and this and TIF.
Follow up?
There was a city, and I might be wrong, it might not be Waukegan, but there was a city in the Midwest that had a similar program. I feel like it was in Michigan. And it completely unlocked a lot of redevelopment within that city. And they were using it for single-family and duplexes and whatnot. We have so many properties that can be used for so many different things with historical purpose. I think like this is a really smart application of what we're doing.
Mr. Schmidt.
So, and I had seen that you couldn't stack with TIFs. That's good. And you, but they would be able to choose sort of which approach, or if they're, if the building is in a TIF currently, how would a choice?
Sure. So TIF is different anyway because you can't just choose to take TIF, right? You've got to have a development agreement and go to a city council and those other things. So in this case, what we're talking about for the RE RC would be, it's very similar to the Iowa side, and that's what we're trying to mirror here a little bit, is if you do this type of project, you know, you don't need to negotiate with anybody. You don't need to go see a city council. You know, if I do this type of project, the city's gonna work with me and do this, right? So it builds that confidence to invest. But again, back to your question on TIFs, like, they would have to, if they were gonna get TIF benefits, they would have to present the but-for argument to us. They would have to work with Chris Parr, come up with some kind of deal to get TIF benefits. And if they did that, they wouldn't be able to utilize the RE RC property tax exemption.
So, so in that, in that case, if a building is in a TIF, right, and they choose to go with the RE RC benefit, right, which makes sense, but the city still takes the benefit from the TIF, right? So I'm trying to understand how that stacks up, and if it's like, if it's a 90, and I know that's by, like, kind of by example, but if it is 90%, is that 90 off of the locked-in TIF rate off the total? How's that?
Sure. So I mean, this could be a situation sometimes where there might not be a base, like, or they're not, might not be an increment for you to take advantage of as a person who owns that property too, right? So you'd be going, let's say you're going to do an existing TIF area, you're gonna have probably a base. And we're talking about a building that has not redeveloped yet. We're probably gonna be talking about a base value from 10 or 20 years ago. And, you know, we would have to look at that, we have to look at that and see if a 10-year, you know, does the TIF even help them at that point, you know? So they may be looking at RE RC or whatever. But it doesn't guarantee you're gonna be able to, I think the main answer for you would be, it doesn't guarantee they're going to get TIF benefits, right? Because the project may not warrant it, or there might not be any increment there to award them.
I'm sorry, I guess you're misunderstanding the angle of my question.
Sure.
I'm asking from the perspective of the school district, say.
Okay.
Right? Because now we are double stacking what we're, what we're cutting out of what they're getting, right? That's the part I'm trying to understand is, the payable tax on that building, right, is it's locked in if it's in the TIF, then this is there. So does that mean now that, right, usually the increment would be the portion that goes into the TIF fund, and then the city, the school district everybody gets their portion of the other tax?
Yeah.
But then this, so would the city still get the increment on what would now presumably increase, even if they're not using the benefit there, but it still goes into that fund? And then the rebate is happening out of the main? Or would, because the rebate's happening, it wouldn't actually qualify as increment?
I'm gonna try to untangle that because it is a complex question. And we've had a lot of internal discussions about exactly how this works. School district had questions about how this would work. You know, I'm gonna try and use an example. I think it's maybe a better way to do it. So we have our East Gate TIF, right? And inside any East Gate TIF, there is raw undeveloped land, right? So it has a base value. That base value is changing every year. And as the value increases, there's an increment generated into that TIF, whether there's new construction on it or not. But we're capturing all the increases in value in that TIF and maintaining it within the TIF, right? So now, somebody wants to go in the far northeast corner of the city, where once there was residential proposed, and they want to build those 60 units, right? I think it was around 60 units in three different buildings, if I'm not mistaken. Two 20s and a 10, something like that. So they would look at this, and they would say, okay, what is gonna pencil the best for me with the given remaining life of the TIF? That's a new TIF, so it's got a lot of life left in it. And they would sit down and they would say, okay, is it advantageous to, you know, work out a redevelopment agreement and try and pencil the deal that way? Or is it better to go after just using the river's edge zone for 10 years for the property tax and going that way? And the developers are gonna look at that balance. Now, both of those, both of those approaches are gonna create increment, are gonna create growth dollars. So they're gonna get this 10-year abatement on the property tax, 90%, up to 90%, because that's really what we're talking about. And that 90%, they're not going to be paying, they're gonna pay the 10%, 5% to the city, 5% to the school district, because that's how this has been discussed. So we'll see that coming up, coming out of it, right? And that, will the money stay in the TIF? Probably. I think the answer is yes. The money would stay in the TIF as increment, as opposed to any other way to calculate it. Because we're not going to let the TIFs go upside down. But keep in mind, we also have TIFs outside of East Gate that are much older, that are beyond their half-life, or at their, at the half-life. TIF 13 is an example, or 12. I'm gonna take 12. The Western Illinois University campus property. There's property there, vacant raw land that's buildable, developable, was planned to be developed. It's the same scenario. Now, the difference is, is instead of having 20 years on RDA, they may end up having 10 years in a TIF, RDA versus 10 years on a river's edge zone property tax abatement. And we need to balance that. And I mean, and that's something that we would be doing and working with the pro formas to figure out what's most advantageous to make the deal work.
But the point, you're asking about what is in it for the city. You've already explained how it impacts the other, no, you did explain what is in it for the city. You're wondering, your concern is for the other taxing bodies? Is that what you're wondering?
Yes and no. From the incentive side, makes total sense. 100, like, that, yeah, that's giving them options, great, perfect. They get to pick whichever one's most advantageous. Right. My question is, it is, it's around that, and that legal status, because when we have the TIF, are we sure that this legally supersedes the TIF ordinance? Or does the TIF law overrule this and how that's, and we may not have that tonight, and I'm sorry, I stumbled into this. I didn't know I had this question until we started talking about it tonight. And I'm comfortable where we're at probably, but I think I would like a little more visibility before, as we move through this process, to know how that layers in.
We can work, I'll work with our.
If you can work with Bill on that and perhaps DCO, you know, the state.
I can, I can contact other rivers edge communities and find out exactly what's happened. I, I think, yeah, I think that this, the river's edge law would actually supersede the TIF law, but I'll talk with other rivers edge communities who have experience with this, and they've actually had this happen, I'm sure, already. And I'll find out exactly how that has been handled in the past.
Because I understand your question affects what happens in the TIF.
Yeah, and I'm less worried about the amount or like what are, what we're getting, and more about just like, how are we following that process and are we ensuring it's correct? And are we ensuring our fellow taxing bodies are aware, right? I mean, just, so that when we go to the school district, we know this is the impact. We don't get a surprise that says, oh, by the way, you just don't get anything because the TIF took it all instead. Like, that's, I just, and like you said, someone else has to have dealt with this already.
And just so you are aware too, if you weren't, that, like, our staff went and talked with these taxing bodies first. So they would have a good idea of how this functions. Other communities in our area have already applied to the state and are now going to the taxing bodies. And so that's their prerogative, but there has been significant conversation with those taxing bodies, and they're not presenting any major concerns at this point.
And that's why I feel so much better being up here tonight, knowing that we have that buy-in from them.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderperson Finch, do you have an invocation? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy, Macias, Razak, Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Any public comment at this point? All right, hearing none. We move to our consent agenda.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole and council meeting minutes of November 4, 2025. Appointments made during committee of the whole on November 18, 2025, and consent agenda items to 16.1 through 17.1 inclusively.
Motion to approve. Second motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
All right.
Five ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number 19.1, a resolution authorizing the Human Resources Director to execute a policy with Evolution Risk Partners LLC to provide reinsurance coverage for medical and prescription drug benefit claims for a one-year period commencing January 1, 2026.
Motion to approve. Second motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number 19.2, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a retiree benefit management services agreement with Retiree First Limited Liability Company to provide plan and management services for the city's fully insured Medicare Advantage and Prescription Drug Plan with United Healthcare for Medicare-eligible retirees and retirees dependents for a one-year period commencing on January 1, 2026.
Motion to approve. Second motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number 19.3, a resolution authorizing the Director of Human Resources to execute a Medicare Advantage with Prescription Drug Benefit Group Agreement with United Healthcare Insurance Company to provide a fully insured Medicare Advantage and Prescription Drug Plan for Medicare-eligible retirees and retirees dependents for a one-year period commencing on January 1, 2026.
Motion to approve. Second motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number 19.4, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a client services and fee agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC for brokerage services for liability, property, cyber, workers' compensation, and underground storage tank insurance for a period of one year commencing on December 1, 2025, and authorizing the Director of Human Resources to execute any and all documents in order to bind and accept coverage with Insurance Program Managers Group for liability, property, cyber, and workers' compensation insurance, and Ace American Insurance Company for underground storage tank insurance for a period of one year commencing on December 1, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number 19.5, a resolution approving the second and final amendment to FY 2025 budget adopted by city council on December 3, 2024, council bill slash resolution number 1174-2024, to reflect various changes to line items more particularly described herein, and authorizing the Director of Finance to do all things necessary to complete said changes.
Motion to approve. Second motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Barnes, after all this time? No?
I think so. We should end the year very favorably.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number 19.6, a resolution adopting the annual budget for corporate purposes for the city of Moline, Illinois, for the calendar year. for the city of Moline, Illinois, for the calendar year beginning January one, twenty twenty-six, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder person Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro. Schmidt.
Aye.
Timmyan.
Aye.
I have to vote as well.
And Mayor Ryan Perry.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, that motion carries, and non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. Item number twenty point one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing Ninth Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of eighty-five feet, and adding Ninth Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of sixty feet, and amending chapter twenty motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix eleven thereof, parking prohibited at certain times by removing on Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, Ninth Street on the east side, beginning at a point eighty-five feet south of Railroad Avenue, extending south for thirty feet, and adding on Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM, Ninth Street on the east side, beginning at a point sixty feet south of Railroad Avenue, extending south for fifty-three feet.
Motion to advance the second reading? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder person Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Timmyan.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number twenty point two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix thirty-five thereof, altered speed limits, school speed limit, by removing Twelfth Avenue from three hundred feet east of Fifty Fourth Street to two hundred feet east of Fifty Second Street Court, and amending chapter twenty motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix thirty-five thereof, altered speed limits, school speed limit, by adding Twelfth Avenue from one thousand one hundred and twenty-five feet west of Forty Eighth Street to three hundred feet east of Fifty Fourth Street, and amending chapter twenty motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix thirty-five thereof, altered speed limits, school speed limit, by adding Forty Eighth Street from Eleventh Avenue D to Forty Ninth Street.
Motion to advance the second reading? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Elder person Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Timmyan.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries, and that's all I have this evening, your honor.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a shout out to Renew Moline and Moline Center for Holiday Hop this last weekend. It was great that the weather did not hold anyone back. And lots of people I talked to were having a really good time, so it's always great to see the downtown activated like that, and we'll continue to hope that days outside of special days will be activated like that with more businesses and people frequenting downtown. I was struck also, and thankful for this council's desire to meet the needs of the community in a really uncertain time. We know that people are accessing food distribution in the large numbers. We saw, I got a report from KJ about the vouchers, and I saw the lines for over an hour when I drove by on Saturday, anticipating another huge need that I think Mr. Vitas is managing to, to meet more of a need there when they're, when we have the next session.
It'd be poor Christmas.
Right. And that one is at.
That will be over the city service center. In the gymnasium.
So, just really proud that we're trying to address needs before people become unhoused, before they lose, you know, that option, so that they can stretch those dollars. Also though, when it comes to shelter, we're having some good email exchanges and conversations with just all the partners to, to find out where conversations are at on shelter, because we're, some of our neighboring communities are seeing massive increases in homeless or unhoused folks, creating a variety of issues for th- those communities. And so, we're just trying to make sure we're being proactive at all times. But I think the lesson for us to share is that we have stepped in, you all know, we talked about it during budget, I think, that we spend nearly a million dollars on this kind of care, or these kind of programs, and we're, we're trying to address prevention as our primary goal at the moment. And then I know someone, I, was it Ashley, put the.
Yes.
Lighting of the Commons, so that's our next big event on Saturday, looking forward to seeing lots of people down there. Mr. Timmyan?
Thank you, your honor, I just wanted to thank city staff for coming out last night to the final ward meeting of the year. We had people in attendance, and you know, we went over things, and I had no idea that we had the most roads out of any ward, but now I do. And so, it, it's a marginal victory, I suppose, but I just wanted to thank them and everything that the staff has been doing, getting food programs, I've seen on social media, just people saying, what are all those people doing there? And, you know, it's, it's, people notice it, and it helps spread the word that we're actually doing something for the community. Last, thank you for the new roundabout, which I wrote today on the way here. So, thank you everyone for everything that's going on.
All right, Ms. Finch?
Yep, I have been helping organize and gather supplies for the furlough Rock Island Arsenal employees. Thank you to Bob and Denver for helping me get Bridgepoint and everything set up. Since the Arsenal employees have been paid, they receive their, first their back pay. So, it was taxed heavily, so it's gonna take them a moment to get on their feet. So this week will be the last week that we do donation drop-off at Bridgepoint. So it's Wednesday from three PM to six thirty PM, and then Saturday from eleven AM to three PM.